We get, all right. Very good. We got technology all working. This is Tuesday, May 19th, 2020. It's 9:03, so we'll call this meeting to order. The Chair would recognize Pastor Squares for the invocation and directly following will be the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you are able and willing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And City Councilman, Bethel Life Center, prays for you guys on a regular basis. Father, I thank you for today. Important business done by City Council to provide for the best quality of life in Wichita, Kansas. Pray, Father, for your protection over all the council members' families from virus, as well as prosperity over their families. We pray for the prosperity of Wichita as it opens up under these new stay-at-home orders. I pray that businesses will prosper, families will prosper. Give this City Council wisdom and insight. May they be encouraged in their work and not discouraged by naysayers. Put your blessing upon Mayor Brandon Whipple, the council members that are meeting today, in Jesus' name. And everyone said, amen.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, Pastor. James, if you could text the pastor that we said, "Thank you" before he hung up, that would be great. So with that, let's go to our printed agenda. We'll be looking for the approval of the minutes at the regular meeting from May 12th, 2020, as every member had a chance to review the minutes. Are there any suggested changes to the minutes, discussion about the minutes, or amendments to the printed minutes? See, none. With that, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded by the Vice Mayor. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast a vote. With the result of seven yays to zero nays, the motion passes unanimously. Onward to proclamations. I was told that I can just sit here for proclamations since we have an empty auditorium, so we'll be somewhat deviating from the norm, but that's okay. The first proclamation will be a recognition of the National Public Works Week. So proclamation of the city of Wichita, founded in 1870, whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are vital, of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Wichita, Kansas. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees from state and local governments and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, built, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for citizens, civic leaders, and children of Wichita, Kansas, to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest in the importance of public works and public works programs. Whereas the American Public Works Association has celebrated the annual National Public Works Week since 1960. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Brandon Whipple, Mayor of the city of Wichita, Kansas, along with the Wichita City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of May 17th through the 23rd, 2020, as National Public Works Week, and urge all Wichitaans to join us as we pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protect our health, safety, and quality of life. And with that, we have a video.
Looking for the city, I've realized more and more what a fine group of people I have the privilege to work with. I've found that city employees don't work for a paycheck only, they have pride in their job, and they want to give back to the community. This shows every time they respond to a snowstorm to keep our roads safe, they respond to a water break to help people back through this snow tonight. Round the storm. Thank you. (Inaudible).
We're going to go into our next proclamation, which is a proclamation recognizing National Fosters Care Month. Proclamation of the city of Wichita, Kansas, founded in 1870, whereas Foster Care Month is a time to nationally raise awareness about foster care and its purpose while bringing about increased community involvement. Whereas it is necessary for some children and youth in the community to be temporarily removed from their home to ensure their physical and emotional well-being while providing supports and services to reunify the family. Whereas foster and kinship parents who opened their homes to provide consistency, love, and support provide an important role in a child or youth in foster care's well-being. Whereas there are numerous public and private organizations, state and county organizations and courts, and faith-based organizations who support the foster care system and advocate for the rights of children. Whereas everyone in the community plays an essential role in supporting our children's health and safety. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Brandon Whipple, Mayor of the city of Wichita, Kansas, along with the Wichita City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of May, 2020, as Foster Care Month. In the city of Wichita, we encourage all citizens to reach out and learn how you can make a positive impact for children and families in foster care. Onto the next item, Madam Clerk.
Consent Agenda Items, 1 through 8.
Does every member have a chance to review the consent agenda items? Is there any discussion on the consent agenda items? See, none. With that, I'll make a motion to accept consent agenda items, 1 through 8.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. If there's no discussion on said motion, then the clerk will close the roll, or open the roll, excuse me, and members will cast their vote. With the result of seven yays to zero nays, the consent agenda item passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
Reported Board of Bids and Contracts dated May 18th, 2020.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor. City Councilmembers, Hannah Lang, Department of Finance, here to present the May 18th Board of Bids recommendations.
Good morning.
First engineering bid we have is 2020 C-Clip K-15 KTA Bridge. Recommendation is Cornejo &amp; Sons for $397,562.52. Water distribution system, Phase 1, to serve RF addition. Recommendation is NO-WAT Construction for $62,056. Manhole rehab and reconstruction, 2020 Set 2. Recommendation is visual systems for $178,513.
Ma'am, would you just, just for one moment, is there a way that we can get the slideshow put up for the viewers who are watching on television and also for the council? I'm sure there's a slideshow presentation that details this, but instead we have a photo of Randy. He looks pretty good in that photo, but... Maybe Randy's playing a joke on us and doing this on purpose. If not, we can continue. I just wanted to hopefully take a moment so that we can get the information on the It's not giving me control. Okay. It's not showing. That's weird. Not sure why it's sharing it. It worked earlier. I have to drop off. Rejoining it. Yeah, I lost control on my keyboard. If it's a big difficulty, we could keep moving along. I just wanted to make sure that if it's available, we have it presented. Excellent. I really appreciate you guys. Thank you. Welcome back. Sorry about that.
All right, well, let's try this again.
Apologies.
All right. Here is the May 18th Board of Bid Recommendations. 2020 C-Clip K-15 KTA Bridge, KDOT, for Cornejo &amp; Sons for $397,562.52. Water distribution system, Phase 1, to serve RF addition. Recommendation is NO-WAT Construction for $62,056. Manhole rehab and reconstruction, 2020 Set 2. Recommendation is visual systems for $178,513. Main and gutter brooms for street sweepers. Recommendation is Berry Companies for $80,550. Grounds maintenance at landfills. Recommendation is JSB Land Services for $465,493.75. Veterinary and consulting services. Recommendation is Companion Animal Hospital for $63,000. Rock salt for snow and ice control. Recommendation is Hutch Salt for primary contractor of Group 1 and 2, and Central Salt for secondary contractor for Groups 1 and 2. Tree trimming, pruning, and removal services. Recommendation is Shawnee Mission Tree Service for $18,175. Wichita River Cameras and Installation. Recommendation is Sanifer Engineering and Controls for $101,587.22. Here is the current open request for proposals, as well as the purchasing procurement website. And with that, we recommend the approval of the bid awards as recommended. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions or comments on the item? See, none. With that, the Chair recognizes Councilmember Tuttle of District 2 for a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the Board of Bids as presented.
Motion has been made and seconded. Clerk will close or open a roll? With seven yays to zero nays, the motion does pass unanimously. I, with that, I also apologize to the council member. I had this, a note that this was in your district, but I think I was looking at the wrong, the wrong item.
It's the next item. It's okay.
Apologies. You get to have double, double time this going through. I didn't mean to catch anyone off guard. Madam Clerk.
Public hearing and resolution for a letter of intent to issue Airport Special Facilities Revenue Bonds, Clemmons Aviation LLC.
Good morning, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Tim Goodpasture with the city's Office of Economic Development. For the record, the item before you today is a request for the issuance of a letter of intent to issue Airport Special Facilities Revenue Bonds for Clemmons Aviation. Clemmons Aviation LLC is a recently formed legal entity that was established to build two 18,000-square-foot hangars at Colonel James Jabara Airport. Clemmons is owned by Dwayne and Julie Clemmons, who are also the owners of Stearman Airfield in Benton, Kansas. The hangars will be located at 3622 and 3628 North Jabara. The area outlined in red here is where the facilities will be located. You can see Web Road running from top to bottom on this aerial, just a little left of center, and the facilities would be just north of 35th Street at Jabara Airport. The company is currently requesting a letter of intent to issue Airport Special Facilities Revenue Bonds in an amount not to exceed 4 million. The funds will be used to construct the two 18,000-square-foot hangars. Services offered through these hangars will include charter operations, aircraft maintenance, aircraft storage, and pilot services. The bonds will be used to provide a sales tax exemption on construction materials. No property tax abatement is being requested with this bond issuance since the property is located on airport authority property, which is property tax exempt in its own right. Clemmons intends to transfer 17 employees from its Steerman Airfield to Jabara and add 16 new employees over the next five years at an average annual wage in excess of $76,000 a year. A cost-benefit analysis was conducted by the Center for Economic Development and Business Research at Wichita State, which showed an overall return to the city of 40.63 to 1. Therefore, to staff's recommendation that the City Council close the public hearing, adopt the resolution of intent, and authorize the necessary signatures. I would be happy to stand for any questions.
Questions or comments on the item? See, none. With that, the Chair recognizes Councilmember Tuttle of District 2.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to do this, and I also would like to give sincere appreciation to Clemmons Aviation for investing in our community, investing in Wichita. I wanted to point out that it is usually a recommended return on investment for the city of 1.3, and this is a 40.63, so a significant investment, and it would be great to have new jobs come to Wichita and especially to District 2. So, thank you again. And with that, it is, I would make a motion that the City Council close the public hearing, adopt the resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded by the Vice Mayor. There's no discussion in the motion. Mr. Mayor, Clerk. Discussion.
I apologize for interrupting.
Of course.
Since we have two rooms at C-2, I don't know if there's anybody in those rooms, but you may want to ask if there's public, anyone for public comment before the vote.
So we can, let's go ahead and defer to our communications staff, Megan Lovely, if you can hear me over in Century 2, or is there anyone there who would like to comment publicly on this item?
Can you hear me, Mayor?
Sure can.
There is no one here for public comment.
Excellent. And please feel free to vocalize if someone does approach for public comment on one of these items so that we make sure we get them. There's no further discussion. Motion's made. The roll is open. Members may cast their vote. The result of seven yays to zero nays, the motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Acquisition of a portion of property at 217 East Douglas for the Chester I Lewis Reflection
Good morning, Mayor, members of City Council. Mark Elder with the Office of Economic Development. The item before you today is the acquisition of a building or a portion of a building that is just east of the Chester I Lewis Reflection Park. It is part of an overall project that began last year that includes a $75 million conversion of four buildings in downtown along Douglas. That includes the former State Office Building that will become the Kansas Health Science Center, the former Sutton Building that will become 119 units of student housing associated with that Science Center, the former Broadway Plaza Building, which will be a 119-room AC Marriott Hotel, as well as the former Henry's Building that will be converted to a commercial kitchen and culinary school. The aerial here shows you the different colors of those buildings between the Broadway Plaza on the north, the blue outline is the former State Office Building, Henry's is on the right there in the green, as well as Sutton Building down on the south there in the yellow. On the north there, a little bit to the left of the red square, the former Broadway Plaza, you can see Reflection Park and the building that we're discussing today, which will be highlighted later in a closer aerial. So, in 2019, there was a development agreement approved in November that it did include city participation for that overall project that had some traditional downtown redevelopment incentives with facade, asbestos, industrial revenue bond, CID, as well as tax increment financing. That tax increment financing was, the plan was approved about two weeks ago that had about $1.3 million for park renovations, and part of the development agreement has the developer guaranteeing the TIF bonds for $1.3 million to tie up to the investment that's going into the park. It also included a parking agreement, and then now we can see improvements to that park that had, at that time, anticipated approximately $300,000 for land acquisition. The park itself, a little more detail, it is established a $1.3 million project with a million of those dollars going to updates to the park, opening up the park as a gathering space, but returning those historic and cultural elements. The budget doesn't allow for, you know, a huge renovation, but it does allow to upgrade and open up that park. But also included that $300,000 for the acquisition of a portion of the land going to that. And again, all $1.3 million is guaranteed by the developer. So the property in question today has a purchase price of $265,000. Again, that's below the anticipated $300,000. That is based on third-party appraisal. The building will be demolished and the site cleared prior to the acquisition. The city will only be acquiring the front 90 feet of that property while the developer will retain the rear 30 feet so that they can build an entrance to the school. The closing on this property will not incur until the school has received a candidate status by COCA. You can see there the building directly adjacent to the park is the one being discussed in the, kind of the off-white color with the red bottom. That will be acquired and cleared and then acquired. So the park project itself, just to give a little more background on this project, it will be led by the Park and Recreation Department, as well as including a committee comprised of community stakeholders. It will include public engagement on the redesign, but the process will also be coordinated with the timing of the Kansas Health Science Center to time in with those constructions to where they open approximately around the same time. And the demolition will also be coordinated with the city, so there will be announcements, coordination with that before that building does come down. You can see on this image here the current existing park, and you can see on the left side or the east side where that building is that will be removed. The aerial here shows the approximate size of the area that will be acquired in that red box. So you can see still there on the south end there, there's a portion of the building that will be retained by the developer for some access to their building, but the rest that will be demolished and cleared and acquired by the city for expanding that park. With that, the staff will take any questions, but it is recommended the City Council adopt the resolution that approves the acquisition and authorize the mayor to sign any necessary documents, and I will stand for any questions.
Questions on the item? Chair recognizes Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Mayor. Mark, I just want to be clear on the demo of the building. It says in the green sheet that the land will be delivered with the building removed and the ground filled and graded. Will that be our expense or at the expense of the seller? And if it is our expense, where are those funds coming from? Is it out of the TIF or is it park operating budget?
That is the developer's expense. So the acquisition price includes not only a purchase of the building, but a portion of that demolition. So when we acquire it, we're buying it as-is with that land cleared, so there will be no additional costs to demolish that building.
All right, thank you.
Further discussion? Chair recognizes Councilmember Bluebog.
Thank you, Mayor. And I just want to restate, this is all going to be borrowed against future TIF money, and this is, you know, none of this is going to be new tax dollars. How about maintenance of the park? Do we have any estimates on what we'd be looking at, and would that be paid for out of the TIF?
We don't have any estimates on what the maintenance would be. I could ask the Parks Department to discuss that, but we also, as part of the development agreement, does include a community improvement district with a portion of those revenues that will go to pay for some maintenance on that park, and I believe Troy Hatman might discuss a little bit more on that maintenance.
Good morning, Mayor, Council, Troy Hatman, Director of Parks and Recreation. The addition of the square footage is not that much. The actual park is currently maintained within our budget, so we're going to be, also be working with our new neighbors, creating a development agreement with them to help with some of the service in that area as well. So we don't anticipate any extra dollars hitting our budget for maintenance.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions or comment on this item? See, none. With that, the Chair recognizes District 1 Councilmember Brandon Johnson for a motion.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I make the motion, I just want to highlight again several community stakeholders that reached out to me concerning this project. There will be outreach to various groups, specifically the family of Chester I Lewis, to ensure that his legacy is highlighted in this reflection square, as well as groups like the local NAACP, which helped get this going in the first place. So there will be outreach. Meeting will be coming soon, and this is not an attempt to get rid of the reflection square, so I just wanted to say that on the record. With that, I would move that the City Council approve the acquisition and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by the Vice Mayor.
Could I ask that the motion be clarified to say, "Adopt the resolution"?
Make her the motion.
Make the amendment to adopt the resolution and approve the acquisition and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents.
Original motion has been amended. Is the second?
Second.
Still strong. So with that, the motion has been amended and made. A second has been made by the Vice Mayor. If there's no discussion on said motion, a clerk will open a roll. Members will Members will cast their vote. The result of seven yays to zero nays, the motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
2020 lift station rehabilitation.
Oh, before we continue, I did get a text message from a viewer who said that to let them know that the City Council meeting is on repeat on the audio, it is very difficult to watch at home because the person speaks and then it immediately repeats their audio over. The closed captions describe it as indiscernible. I would agree. So apparently we're having technical problems with the stream. Just wanted to let staff know that I know they're doing their best, but wanted to make sure we relay that message. So onward to the item.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. For the record, I'm Don Henry with Public Works and Utilities. The item before you at the moment is a request for funding authorization to address sanitary lift station rehabs across all districts. There are currently 67 sanitary lift stations in the city, and lift stations function to pump sewage along through the collection system so that it can make its way to the appropriate treatment facility. Improvements are scheduled each year according to a risk-based approach. We have a tool that we use that was developed by a consultant in 2013. Staff continues to develop that tool and prioritize work each year. In 2020, we will address six lift stations across the city. The table before you shows the address of each lift station, the work description, and an estimated cost for each lift station. I won't take you through all of this, but the work will range from replacing lift stations and upgrading to address high-strength industrial waste as opposed to the current design of the lift stations, replacement of aging equipment, repair of appurtenances, and then we keep an eye on the flows and a couple of them we will upgrade accordingly because of increased flow and growth in the area. The current adopted CIP includes funds in the amount of 1.2 million for year 2020 to address the rehab and replacement of the lift stations, and staff is requesting the full amount be authorized at this time. Therefore, I'd like to go ahead and make staff's recommendations to City Council to adopt the resolution and authorize all necessary signatures. I'll stand for any questions that you have at this time.
Are there questions or comments about the item? Further discussion? See none. With that, I will make the motion to take staff's recommended action to adopt the resolution, authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded by the Vice Mayor. There's no discussion in the motion. Clerk will open a roll. Members will cast their vote. With the result of seven yays to zero nays, the motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
2020 park facility enhancements.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council. My name is Larry Hootmer, Public Works Engineering. The item before you today is the 2020 park facility enhancements. This item is within the Department of Park and Recreation Capital Improvement Program. Some background on this project, it's an ongoing project that is used to develop and rehabilitate aging park amenities. It was initiated, it's been initiated annually since 2001, and this fund helps us keep the facility safe, functional, aesthetically attractive. So 2020 park priorities include, first and foremost, a North Linwood shelter. This shelter received some extension, extensive damage due to a fire in February this year, and so we need to address this structure in North Linwood. Swanson Footbridge is another element that we need to address. It was developed in the 90s and needs some repair work. These are some other projects that are on our radar. Edgemore Recreation Center patio, this is the front door to our recreation center. Currently, this area is holding a lot of rainwater, and we need to address the concrete area and the drainage in this area. The Westside Athletic Field Stadium, we're looking at improving the Grandstand Stadium, both in terms of exterior and interior restrooms, locker rooms. These improvements will supplement, improvements that already been done to the complex. Friends University recently installed a, an artificial turf field at this location, and in years past, they've done some dugout improvements as well. Pawnee Prairie Nature Center, this is a building that was initially the horse stables at Pawnee Prairie Park. It was converted into a nature center later on, and it's been vacant. We've had some issues out here. We need to address this structure. Staff, like, would prefer to fix this to make it usable for events and rentals. Chisholm Creek Park boardwalks, again, this was a park that was developed in the early 90s in conjunction with the Great Plains Nature Center. There's this extensive system of boardwalks in this park that need attention, trip hazards, aging decking and such. Each one of these projects mentioned earlier fall within our facility condition index, and they rank within the critical range, which means deferred maintenance costs are at least 30% of the total replacement costs. And with that, we would, these projects are within the adopted 2019-20 capital improvement program. It does include $525,000 in 2020 for park facility enhancements. Staff recommends that we initiate the project, adopt the resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures. And with that, I'll stand for any questions at this time.
Are there any questions about the item? For discussion? See none. With that, I will make the motion that we take staff's recommended action to adopt the resolution, authorize the necessary signatures, and authorize the initiation of the project. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. There's no discussion in the motion. Clerk will open a roll. Members will cast their vote. The result of seven yays to zero nays, the motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Coronavirus emergency supplemental funding program solicitation.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Council. I am Wanda Givens with Wichita Police Department. The coronavirus funding program, it is administrated by the Department of Justice. It's used to assist local governments to respond to the virus. It's used to purchase equipment and supplies. It's used to address medical needs of inmates in detention centers. However, that does not apply to us. The Wichita Police Department will use the grants for purchase of personal protective equipment, also known as PPE. That is going to include hand sanitizer, gowns, mask, additional paid leave for first responders and staff support, laptops, Citrix accounts, and ongoing calls for WPD staff working from home, cell phones for WPD staff to address increased communication needs, hotel calls per diem for Wichita PD staff that need to be isolated due to the virus. The Wichita Police Department will also use a portion of the funds to manage an emergency manager position for the pandemic's response, and this would include all the logistics. And the other part, I'm going to refer to Chief Stone.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and City Councilmembers. Wichita Police Department was kind enough to allow us to utilize some of the money that they were requesting, and what we're proposing to do with our portion of the money is to purchase software programs that allow us to implement an inventory system. Currently, our inventory system is manually. This will allow us to automate it and also improve our efficiencies and also our accountability.
My apologies, Chief Stone, and we will stand for any questions.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Toddle.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. If we could go back to slide 58, please, if possible. If not, we can, we can make it work, but I was just curious because it mentions the emergency manager position. So could, and I don't know if this would go to Mr. Layton or to Ms. Givens, but just a little bit more information on that position, and is it a temporary position? And when the funds are no longer available, how will that position be funded? Not everyone at once?
Deputy Chief, would you mind answering that question?
The grant runs for two years, and I don't know if the position would be carried on after that second year, where the funding, where we would have to find that from.
Okay, great. Thank you. Just want to make sure it's, it would be challenging to hire someone and then not know if we'd be able to sustain the position when the funds are no longer available. So if it's two years, we have some time to maybe see if we can find additional funding or maybe additional grant funds will be available. So, thank you.
Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Mayor. Along those same lines, not only the position would require ongoing funding, but so would the software. So what is the dollar figure for both, the position and the software?
I don't have that information with me, sir.
Councilmember Frye, the software for a two-year program is around $17,000. That's both the initial purchase of it and also the upkeep of it. It's approximately, and I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but the yearly annual update on this software program is approximately $2,000. I believe our budget would be able to incur that without any additional funds.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Frye, my recollection is that position is in the 50 to $60,000 range.
Okay. I just like to have the context, so thank you.
Any more questions or comments? See none. With that, I will make a motion to accept staff's recommended action of approve the grant application, authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Second's been made by the Vice Mayor. If there's no discussion on the said motion, then members will cast their votes, since clerk has already opened the rolls. The result of seven yays to zero nays, the motion does pass unanimously. Madam Clerk.
Quarterly financial report for the quarter ended March 31st, 2020.
Good morning, Mayor and members of the City Council. Sean Henning, Director of Finance. The item before you this morning is the quarterly financial report as of quarter ended March This report serves to provide unaudited activity through the end of the first quarter and also compares those results to the 2020 adopted budget that was approved in August of last year. Also, it identifies trends or issues that we may face throughout the remainder of 2020. Some of the key points that we'll be talking about this morning include the fact that the general fund performed well during the first quarter. We do anticipate to face some shortfalls as we move forward this year, mostly due to COVID-19. And one of the other significant things that we'll point out is that the golf fund continues to face challenges. Focusing on the general fund, revenues were 2.8 million and totaled higher at the end of first quarter as compared to quarter one of last year, and totaled 90 million for year to date 2020. Nearly all revenues in the general fund performed well and consistent with our expectations in comparison to the adopted budget. With respect to general fund expenditures through the end of first quarter, they totaled 55.8 million and were 1.7 million higher in 2020 compared to the prior year, and again, they were consistent with budgeted amounts. Public safety continues to be a priority, and public safety alone represents approximately 50% of the adopted budget expenditures. If we were to include highways and streets as well as public safety, those amounts account for 65% of the adopted budget. This slide just shows you where we are year-to-date with revenues over expenditures, and through this point in time, we have a increase, positive change in fund balance of 33.9 million, and that compares with 32.8 million this time last year. So it's about 1.1 million higher and places us in a better position than compared to last year. Key takeaways for the general fund, again, both on the revenue and the expenditure side, we, expectations are met in accordance with the adopted budget and we're consistent with our expectations. Public safety and highways and streets both continue to be a priority, and quarter one performance, I should note, will not be indicative of what we expect throughout the remainder of the year primarily due to COVID-19. For the golf fund, while rounds were up 14.3% through the first quarter and compared to this time last year, however, revenue was only up 1.8%. And golf expenditures were down 19.4% through the end of the first quarter, and part of that is due to the decision to only open one course for eight weeks during the winter months, which was, pardon, two courses, excuse me, two courses through the winter months, and that was implemented at the end of last year. And at the end of the first quarter, the operating deficit was a little over 300,000. So we'll continue to point out that the golf fund continues to face challenges. At the end of the first quarter, their unencumbered cash balance was negative 221,000. Our total bonded debt for the city of Wichita is just over 1 billion, and this chart shows that 68 million of that consists of general obligation debt that is supported through property tax, and that's really only about 7% of our total bonded debt. The largest portions of our debt consist of debt that is to be repaid by enterprise funds and revenue bonds, that would be in the gray portion of the slide and the light blue portion of the slide. The next largest category of our bonded debt consists of special assessments, and that accounts for 14% and totals approximately 146 million. Takeaways on debt activity, we had very little activity with small principal payments occurring during the first quarter. A larger portion of our debt activity occurs later in the year with larger principal payments in August, September, and October. Again, GOAT large debt remains at only 7% of our total bonded debt, and the city is approximately 914 million below the legal debt limit. As we look forward, COVID-19- As we look forward, COVID- nineteen has certainly altered our outlook and our forecast for twenty twenty. We're currently projecting a deficit of approximately ten million for twenty twenty. And as we move on to revised, we will have more information as we go along regarding especially our revenues as it pertains to local sales tax, franchise fees, interest earnings, and charges for services. Those are the major areas that we expect to be impacted. Preliminary estimates are included in the quarterly report and again will be refined during the revised budget. Overall, the general fund performed well through the end of first quarter. We don't, do not expect that to continue with that trend. And by the end of twenty twenty, we expect a worse picture than what we're looking at today. The golf fund is challenged and has a negative, negative net position. And at this time, I'd like to recommend that the City Council receive and file the quarterly financial report for the period ending March thirty-first, twenty twenty.
All right, is there discussion on the item or questions? See none. With that, I will make the motion that we accept staff's recommended action to receive and file the quarterly financial report for the quarter ending in March thirty-first, twenty twenty. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded by the Vice Mayor. If there's no discussion on the motion, clerk will open the rolls. Members cast the vote. With a result of seven yeas to zero nays, the motion does pass. Excuse me, Madam Clerk.
Overestimate bid for Aquatics Master Plan Phase One A.
Good morning, Mayor and Councilmembers. Gary Jansen, Public Works Engineering. Item before you this morning is an overestimate bid for Phase One A of the Aquatics Master Plan. Just some quick background. The City Council approved the overall plan on June fourth of twenty nineteen, and bids were open for Phase One A on April third of twenty twenty. And this includes renovation of existing pools at Ailey, McAdams, and Orchard Parks. And the loan bid received exceeded the consultant engineer's estimate. The lowest bid received was approximately fifteen percent over the estimate. We've talked previously about this being fairly unique work. During project development and design, we try to mitigate the risk that contractors see with this type of work, and there's not a lot of contractors that do the work. But it makes it challenging for estimating the, the actual cost, and we want to try to stay as close as we can. And we end up resulting, not unexpectedly, with a, a low bid higher than our estimate. Accepting this bid will allow the project to proceed without requiring it to rebid, thus eliminating a potential increase in the cost and delay in construction. Funding is available within the remaining Aquatics Master Plan budget, which was approved by the City Council in October of twenty nineteen. With that, staff recommends City Council approves the revised estimate, approve acceptance of the lowest bid, and authorize the necessary signatures. I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Questions on the item? See none. Since this falls under District Four, the Chair recognizes Councilmember Boobog for a motion.
Thank you very much, and I'd like to make the motion to approve the revised estimate and approve the acceptance, acceptance of the lowest bid.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. If there's no discussion on the motion, clerk will open a roll. Members cast the vote. With a result of seven yeas to zero nays, the motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Resolution in support of the Salvation Army.
I believe the next two items are council items, and Mr. Mayor, these are requests, I think, to your office.
There you go. Is there any discussion about the resolution to support the Salvation Army? Chair recognizes Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to recognize the work that the Salvation Army does in our community. They are one of the nonprofits that truly operate with the lowest budgets and most cost-effective return on the work that they do. And this time of crisis in our community, there's especially challenge, and, and our support by words and a resolution would inspire other people to give to them. I think it's appropriate.
Is there further discussion on the item? Given the kind words from the Councilmember Frye, then I will defer the floor to you for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion that we adopt the resolution approving a letter of support and authorize all necessary signatures.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by the Vice Mayor. If there's no discussion on the motion, clerk will open the rolls. Members will cast the vote. Result of seven yeas to zero nays, the motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Resolution in support of local independent life music venues.
Member would like to speak to this motion. The Chair recognizes the Vice Mayor, Councilmember Claycomb.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to just thank Adam Harky for bringing this to our attention. These venues are really important to the employees who work there and to our community's quality of life. So I hope to see the live music venues come back as soon as possible, considering public safety and health.
Excellent. With that, you may retain the floor for a motion.
Thank you. I'd like to move that City Council adopt the resolution of support and authorize the mayor to sign.
I would like to second that motion. If there's no discussion on the motion or item, then the clerk will open a roll. Members cast the vote. Result of zero, I mean, seven yeas to zero nays, the motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Resolution adopting procedures for public comment.
Discussion. There we go. Welcome, Jim.
Hey, good morning, Mayor and Council. Jim Jonas, Communications Director for the City of Wichita, presenting on the resolution of procedures for public comment. During this coronavirus pandemic, social distancing guidelines and other safety precautions have limited the public's direct interaction with council while City Hall has been closed to residents and the news media. As such, you've asked us to seek ways to maximize direct public engagement for residents with you during the shutdown. And to this end, and in your packets, you'll see the procedure for public comment regarding City Council items while City Hall is closed. As you know, in addition to the ongoing acceptance of written comments from residents that can be submitted up to eight AM on the day of the City Council meeting, we've added remote viewing and participation capabilities to rooms at the Century Two Building. We've provided viewing screens and laptops with video cameras so residents can remotely but directly speak to council. And as you've already heard from Megan this morning, city staff and security are in those rooms to facilitate public participation. And we're closely following CDC guidelines on safe social distancing, the use of face masks, and other preventative measures to keep residents and our staff safe at the remote location. Resident participation at the remote location will still require they provide their name and address and limit their comments to five minutes. Complete participation guidelines will be updated and available at the wichita.gov website. We anticipate these rooms will be available until the June second council meeting, when we hope to be able to accommodate the public's attendance at City Hall. The reason we're coming to you today with this resolution is to formalize the procedures for the public's participation, should we need to, in the future, offer the remote location option for resident engagement. The recommended action is to adopt the resolution and authorize the mayor to sign. Thank you. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions about the resolution? See none. With that, I will make a motion to adopt the resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. If there's no discussion on the motion, clerk will open a roll. Members cast the vote. With a result of seven yeas to zero nays, the motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Appointments and Comments.
Is there appointments or comments at this time? Chair recognizes Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. I just want to highlight the wonderful work Health Corps Clinic is doing in the community. They invited both the mayor and I out for a tour and an opportunity to get tested on camera just to show folks how easy it was. I just want to encourage anyone who's seen that. My facial expression was not pain. It was a weird tingle that's in, in the top of your nose and the space that I did not know I had up there. But it was just a tingle for a few seconds, and after that, it was fine. So quick and easy. Just want to encourage folks to get tested, and that's a great site to go.
Just a comment on that is you, you have to be cautious of the invitations you receive from Councilmember Johnson. Never quite sure what, what you're in for, and it went from a, let's just tour this facility to let's sit down on chairs and have a swab stuck into our nose. I will say the, the work they're doing is amazing, and, you know, it's completely free to go get tested. And they also have the antibody test as well. And man, in that video, they really went after Councilmember Johnson with that swab, but he did handle it like a champion. So with that, Chair recognizes Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. I also just wanted to extend some kudos. I wanted to take an opportunity and thank our electeds at the national level. A special thanks to Senator Moran, Senator Roberts, Congressman Estes, and Congressman Marshall. I received a call from Senator Moran on Sunday just for the purpose of checking in on the city and seeing how we're doing and if there's anything that we need. And I just was really impressed of the outreach and just the concern for our community. So appreciated the dialogue and the opportunity to share some of our concerns and needs here at the local level as the largest city in the state of Kansas. So I really commend them for not only their exemplary service every day, but especially their support of cities during this pandemic and, and economic crisis that we're having not only in our city, our state, our nation, but across the world. So thanks again to our electeds at the national level.
Any other comments or appointment board, to boards? See none. We actually have to go into executive session. So I will make a motion, move that the City Council recess into executive session for twenty minutes to receive information on a pending lawsuit appraisal pursuant to KSA seventy-five, four, three, one, nine, B, two, for legal consideration with the city attorney, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship pending litigation, legal advice. The executive session is required to protect attorney-client privilege and the public interest. And I will say that this will go from ten fifteen to ten thirty-five, in which we'll reconvene in these chambers. This meeting will be held in the boardroom, and that gives us about a ten-minute break between. That motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded by the Vice Mayor. Clerk will open the roll. Members cast the votes. With a result of seven yeas to zero nays, we will be in executive session in ten minutes at ten fifteen. Thank you.